Good morning, and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for November 14th, 2023. We'd ask you to stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
This morning for our invocation, I'd like to take a moment to remember Keegan Spencer. Keegan Spencer was a first responder, a tow truck operator, who was killed a little over a week ago when a vehicle veered out of control into the median and took him out. So, his father, Matt Spencer, was a Rutland Township trustee, a former business owner. Keegan was a member of the service community here. So, just as a reminder to move over, slow down, we're in the ice and snow season, so if you could just pause for a moment to remember Keegan Spencer. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Colton?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Doster?
Present.
Getty?
Here.
Hatfield?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Smelker?
Here.
Tunison?
Here.
Thank you. Approval of the written agenda, at this time, any member of the board of the public may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Commissioners, if you could remove item B, approval of November 7th, 2023, committee of the whole meeting minutes, and move those to the items for consideration.
Mr. Chair, are we also removing number 10?
Number 10, yes. Rachel France will not be able to be with us today, so item 10 will be removed from our agenda as well. Any additional requests? Hearing no such request, does any commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as amended. Reports from state and county officers. Do we have any state and county officers that would like to share or update with the board?
Yes, thank you, Chair Jackson. I, first of all, want to, before I forget, tell everybody, I'm sponsoring a luncheon in honor of my court administrator, Inez Straub, in the basement of the Courts and Law Building. You are invited. Inez was awarded this year, and I like to brag about the courts and the job we have done here in Berry County because we do work hard to provide justice to all of our citizens. But further proof of that is Inez being awarded the Trial Court Administrator of the Year for All of the State of Michigan. It's a big deal. She's earned it. I met Inez probably 30 years ago when she was working at a local restaurant. Struck me as she was so kind to my young daughter. That was, like I said, 30 years ago. And most people, when they think of Inez, they think of she's such a hard worker. But she's so much more than that, so smart, an incredible problem solver, dedicated to maintaining, not only maintaining the courts, but improving our courts. And what has been most important to me is her integrity and honesty. She really is the best court administrator in the state, and we are fortunate to have her. So, I just want, and this is further proof of her accomplishment, she, it's pretty heavy. So, hopefully, well, you guys can take a look at that in the basement at lunchtime. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Is that today at lunch?
What's that?
Today? Today?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're safe.
You should be on cloud nine. Congratulations.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Let them pass those out. Tomorrow's another holiday, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of, it seems like we're getting a lot more car deer accidents than we have in the past few years, too. So, I think it'll be a good harvest this year. Anyways, this is our stats for the, excuse me, month of October. The correction staff had booked and processed 159 persons into the jail. Additionally, released 103 people back into the community. The daily average population was 51. Staff has transported 52 inmates to and from various locations, including court, medical facilities, and other counties. In addition, we have fingerprinted 110 persons at the front counter. Kitchen staff has prepared 4,571 meals at the cost of $2.65 a meal. And maybe the end of this year, I'll give you a report that shows this year, and we'll go back maybe a few more years to compare. Anyways, bookings is 159 in 2023. In 2018, it was 319. Releases, 103 compared to 224 in 2018. Daily average population was 51 compared to 94. Transports, 52 compared to 139. Fingerprints, 110 compared to 94 in 2018. Meals served, 4,571 compared to 9,014 at $1.51 a meal. Plumbing repairs is $3,188.49, and HVAC repairs was $613.32. Any questions on that before we move on?
I have one question.
Yes.
So, so once, I think we've talked about this before, the difference between 2018 and 2023 is, is this is post-COVID. I can't believe, I mean, are people just behaving much better?
Of course. No, they changed a whole bunch of laws. And the court here, too, also, when the front of the court people, we no longer house them unless it's absolutely necessary. They've done very good on finding people work. And so, that cut our population down. Then there was a lot of laws that were changed within two, three years, is that right?
2020.
2020, yeah, 2020. And that worked, keeping the jail population down. So, there was stuff like, one of the things that used to drive us crazy in the law enforcement community was, you find somebody who had a suspended driver's license. And what they do is they pay off all those fines and everything to the courts. Next thing you know, there's a Secretary of State driver's license reinstatement fee. And I don't think in my career ever wrote anybody for not paying that, because that was ridiculous to me. And that, if they can't afford their driver's license, and they're having a hard time paying it, then we just threw another fee on top of them, which now we're going to go lock them up in jail again because their license is still suspended, which is another booking fee on top of that. So, it was like a dog chasing its tail, and they've got rid of stuff like that. So...
The driver responsibility fee.
Yes. So, anyways, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Law enforcement logged 807 complaints in the month of October. Thirty-six individuals are arrested. There were 130 accidents, 95 involved deer. We had one involved alcohol or drugs. 448 criminal histories were run for warrant entry and warrant request. Seventy-one sex offenders were processed. 256 pistols were processed. Incidents handled, 2023, 807. 2018, 704. Accidents, 130. In 2018, 119. Car deer accidents, 95. 2018, there was 80. Arrests, there was 36. 2018, there was 58. Alcohol-related arrests, three. In 2018, there was 10. That's all I have for you. All right.
What's the record for car deer accidents for a month in the county?
What's the record? Yeah, I don't know. When I first started working here back in 89, we were competing with Kent County for the most car deer accidents in the state. Yeah. And Kent County's a lot bigger than us, and we're still competing with them. So...
Another good reminder to slow down, take your time, and keep your eyes open because they are moving right now.
Yeah, we also recommend you don't swerve to miss them either. That's usually when you find the rollovers or head-on collisions or something like that. So...
The orange army will be in force for the next couple of weeks, so they'll be moving even more. So...
Send out the crowd, right?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Additional reports from state or county officers. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
The inflation's been tough on us. We couldn't afford the last sheet. Joel Libitz in Rutland Township. Colette Scrimger is a liar. Don't take my word for it. Though, look at the paper that's in front of you, signed by seven Eaton County Commissioners. They put their name to it. I don't want to talk about that, though. I want to talk about the last meeting. There was some dialogue between me and a Commissioner during public comment, and it was respectful. I encourage it. And, you know, I look forward to that going on again. However, Mr. Chair, there is a Commissioner to my right that has a nasty habit of hearing what I have not said, then repeating it. I haven't taken issue with it in the past because I do understand that the world doesn't revolve around me. However, when he flirts with committing civil infractions during meetings, I will perk my ears and address it. He said personal attacks are not allowed at public meetings. And I've searched high and low for this rule over the past probably 10, 15 years. Haven't found it. I challenge Commissioner Doster, though, to clear his name by finding this mysterious rule because I sure can't find it. What I have found are things like, and you can stop me if you've read it, the First Amendment, Article 1, Section 2 to the Michigan Constitution, as well as the Open Meetings Act, and several Attorney General opinions by Frank Kelly, our longest-serving state's Attorney General in Michigan's history. Public Act 196 of 1973, I memorized this in preparation for a Health Department meeting that some of you attended, states a person shall not give their opinion as that of an agency. Also, public rules do not, for public comment, do not take effect until they are adopted and recorded. Therefore, declaring that rules exist as if he was a robe monarch without a Magna Carta is kind of unbecoming to a Commissioner. This Commissioner also stated that, according to what I said, it should be recognized that nothing Colette says is true. No, I did not say that, nor could an individual with an average intellect infer that. What I said is that Colette Scrimger is a liar. But even Colette, much like certain Commissioners or broken clocks, can be right twice a day. Now, my recommendation to this Commissioner is that they keep quiet and look foolish rather than open his mouth and remove all doubt. And if this Commissioner does not like personal attacks, then maybe we could have a GoFundMe to get him a helmet, or better yet, there's the door.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Morning. Gary White, Nashville Caston, Berry County, whatever. I didn't know that was coming, but I did have a concern that Commissioner Doster did claim a personal attack and a liar is a violation of your rules. Well, if that's true, when Mike Colton yelled, "You lied," directed at me, why didn't any of you step up and claim this rule, this law, and represent me, a citizen of Berry County? So, I'm just sitting here thinking, wow, I didn't lie. Nobody stepped up to call it out. The Chair actually gave him the opportunities and told him he would have the opportunity during Commissioner comments to address it, which he didn't do, which was a good thing. But I'm not sure. I think the Open Meetings Act gives people the right to address the Commissioners. Mr. Campbell, you work hand-in-hand with the health officer. You ignored the people. Over 250 that came in here at the last commission, when you had to move to the courthouse, and you heard person after person after person. You didn't hear a word of them. But you backed her at the last meeting. Well, now you have signed, I don't know, signed paper from Eaton County Commissioners. I guess, I didn't know that was coming either. So, but I'm just sitting here wondering, when are you going to start representing the people? Not one of you have talked about the concerns of Berry County, and this goes for everybody, not just you at this point in time, the concerns that Berry County residents had in that strategic plan that was skewed toward the Health Department. You haven't addressed one issue, but yet you're ready to pass it this coming Friday. So, it just becomes ridiculous at this point in time to say that you represent the people of Berry County. I just sit here and wonder. I couldn't do that if I were you. If I'm elected to represent the people, and concerns continually come up, there was 400 to 500 people that showed up at the Health Department meeting. John Smelker was there, Dave Jackson was there. You weren't there at that point in time, but you had to have heard about it. It was all over the place. So, the Health Department is a problem. Then they're going to expand again. I'm just sitting here. If they're a problem and you allow them to expand again, it does create a bigger problem, doesn't it? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Sharon Zabrowski, Carlton Township. First, I'd like to say congratulations. That's quite an honor. But I can't believe that they actually hired people at age eight. As county Commissioners, you're responsible for everything in this county, and that's a lot. So, you have boards, committees, and commissions to help. But you are still responsible for everything. Last week, that wasn't an interview for Parks and Rec Commission, but a fact-finding quest. These interviews should be the same as if you were applying for a job. When an interviewer answers some of the questions, there's a problem with either the questions or the applicants. I feel the problem was with the questions, not the applicants. I think you need to start over, repost the positions, and re-interview. This will give you time to get the information you need about the parks and the responsibilities of the Parks and Rec Commission. Then you will be better able to ask questions that pertain to the abilities and the knowledge needed to be on the Parks and Rec Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Additional public comment?
Larry Bass, Carlton Township. Peace be with you.
And also with you.
A couple of comments were made over the past concerning the Second Amendment resolution, and that concerned me. Number one was, we're concerned about losing, oh shoot, what's the word? Anyway. And also, MAC only had three counties that had submitted information on, in favor of a Second Amendment resolution. This is a copy of a spreadsheet, and I'm not as good at spreadsheets as I was when I worked. But it's 56 counties in this state have either passed a resolution for a Second Amendment sanctuary or reaffirming the Constitution. Other comments also made, we don't want to get out of our lane. Well, these 56 counties had no problem getting out of their lane. And this is for information only. If you have questions on it, I'll talk to you later. But it's something for you guys that should digest. Fifty-six counties disagreed with the position you took. In the first segment, the rural counties, the last segment is urban counties. So, there was 10 urban counties that also passed a Second Amendment resolution or reaffirmed the Constitution. Please think about that and consider this a shot across the bow, because that issue's not done. Thank you very, now, this also, there's a Health Board meeting this Friday.
Don't do that.
I have a hard time seeing vertical lately. Pass tools around if there's one, if there's actually one, here, pick that one. I'm tired of the fall garb that has been associated with the oath of office pertaining to the health officer of Michigan. What you're going to see here is a excerpt from the 1963 Michigan Constitution that very clearly states, and you can read it, that all officers of any government agency in Michigan is required to take the oath of office. Now, I don't know if God's taken it or not, I've heard she hasn't. But the three of you are on the Health Board, and there's a Health Board meeting this Friday. I will be attending that to see if any of you have the fortitude to, number one, ask the question, and number two, insist that the oath of office be taken. And below that, there's a copy of MCL 15, or actually, MCL 15-151. It's on top. Below that is a copy of the Constitution. It's Article 11, Section 1 of the Michigan Constitution, very clearly states the same thing. So, the question is, are we going to follow the law, follow the Constitution or not? The choice is yours. Be careful on your decision, that's all I can say. And I hope you agree to follow the law. Thank you very much. You have a nice day.
Thank you, Larry. Additional public comment?
John Lake Irving Township, I wasn't planning on speaking today. I'm kind of doing that out at the individual townships, but Larry brought up a good point. Four of you see me at your township meetings. On April 18th of this year, we came before you, 40-plus of us, residents of the county, along with the State Representative Angela Regus, asking you to adopt this Second Amendment resolution. Commissioner Jackson, you failed to do that. You failed to bring that in front of the board. So, at my township meeting, I spoke to my Commissioner, and what we decided to do is I'm taking it to each individual township. So far to date, I've been to seven of them. Two of the townships have immediately adopted what we're asking. Two of the townships have immediately adopted what we're asking. The first resolution is to declare each individual township that I go to its own Second Amendment Sanctuary Township. Secondly, I'm asking them to forward to the board a resolution that they adopt the resolution that we put forth back in March. Let me step back here. Those 40-plus residents that came in front of you were not just residents. The vast majority of us were precinct delegates who were representing our constituents out in town, and the failure to do that is just, I can't imagine, I don't know why. I know what you specifically said, that doesn't work for me. So, one township at a time, plan on taking this back. Castleton immediately adopted this resolution. Mike Colton was there, they took it right to a vote, it was done. Last week, or yeah, last week, Prairieville adopted this. I fully intend or expect many more to continue doing this. I'd ask you to reconsider putting this on the agenda and having a thumbs up, thumbs down vote with all the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. Various correspondents, does any commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board?
I have one, Mr. Chair. Be more of a clarification than on some things too, but last week I was reached out by Kathy Anderson, who is involved with an animal shelter. And there was a stray dog brought in last week, and it was, it was really in bad shape. Hair missing off its whole back, but more importantly, it had some major open sores around its rear end area. And they were bleeding, and some of the volunteers down there were very concerned about it, that it needed immediate medical attention. The problem with that is that, seeing as how it's a stray, nothing can be really done other than make that dog comfortable and do the best you can with it for seven days in case the owner shows up to take repossession of the animal and actually take care of it. So basically, after the seven days, nobody showed up. So the dog was still in bad shape, so they did take it to the vet last Tuesday. The vet put it on antibiotics. It was going to have surgery today to remove it because the owner never showed up, which is irresponsible. And a lot of this going on out there, that these people that got dogs three years ago no longer can either afford to take care of them or whatever, and they're just letting them go. So I met with Kathy Anderson down there with Morgan, the director down at the animal shelter, and she's doing a great job. She did the best she could with the dog. When we saw the dog, it was perky, she took it outside, and it was doing a lot better. Her hands were tied, and she was being socially attacked by the media, which was not fair to her. And her hands were tied with the fact that the seven-day rule, which I'm correct with that, right, Michael, with that seven-day? You know, it's unfortunate, but it's a state law. You can't do anything in case you did and the dog died in surgery and then the owner can sue the county. So it's a, it was a sad thing, but they nursed that dog back to health. It was perky when I met down there with Kathy Anderson, and I think when she laughed, she realized that they'd done everything they could for that dog. So just wanted clarification out there that when people think they can immediately do something for an animal, they can't unless the owner shows up. And I wanted to be aware that Morgan did everything she could down there, and she's a young girl, and she's doing a great job. I really thought she was very professional down there, and that dog was in good shape when I saw it. So hopefully it gets adopted. But I do want to stress the fact that they're full down there. They are full, and they're full because people are just turning animals loose because they can't afford to take care of them anymore, unfortunately. So, anyway.
Thank you. When you say attacked by the media, you mean social media, attacked on social media?
Yeah, I should have clarified that. Social media, yes. There was a lot of pictures, a lot of pictures. You know, when a dog lays on a white sheet and it gets up periodically or moves around, there's going to be blood on the sheet because those big, pussy lesions on its hind end were just open wounds. And, you know, they were doing everything they could for the dog, but, but social media, you know, was, you know, and I understand, when you see pictures like that, I can see, you know, why they thought the dog wasn't being taken care of, but they were doing everything they could under the law, so.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any additional correspondence to share with the board?
Mr. Chairman, I did receive an email from Cooperative Extension, MSU Cooperative Extension, which I forwarded to Michael to have sent to the rest of the board.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you. Consent agenda, Commissioner Campbell?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of October 24th, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. See approval to appoint Donald Perry to the Berry County Building Authority for a three-year term that begins 1/1/2024 and ends on 12/31/2026. The approval to reappoint Chelsea Foster, Jim McManus, and Jennifer Heinzman to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for three-year terms beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2026. E, approval of grant number EMC-2023-EP-00005, State of Michigan Fiscal Year 2023 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement, and authorize the County Board Chair and the Emergency Management Coordinator to sign the grant agreement. F, approval of the FY 2024 SCAO Grant Contracts for Adult Drug Court, Sobriety Court, and Swift Insure Sanctions Probation Program. All seven contracts must be signed by Commissioner Chairperson David Jackson via DocuSign.
Is there support? Motion by Campbell, support by Hatfield. For all items listed on the consent agenda, discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Oppose, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we will reschedule Rachel France for a future BOC. Items for consideration, public hearings, we have none. Items for consideration, Commissioner Getty?
I move for the approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $12,782,976.53.
Is there support? Motion by Getty, support by Smelker for approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $12,782,976.53. Is there discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of claims in the amount of $128,673.2.
Is there support?
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Getty, support by Campbell for approval of claims in the amount of $128,673.2. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of Commissioner reimbursements mileage in the amount of $719.19.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Hatfield for approval of Commissioner reimbursement mileage in the amount of $719.19. Discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 23-24, Resolution pledging the full faith and credit of the County of Berry within constitutional limitations for the payment of the MacArthur Drainage District Drain Bonds.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Hatfield for adoption of Resolution 23-24, Resolution pledging the full faith and credit of the County of Berry within constitutional limitations for payment of the MacArthur Drainage District Drain Bonds. Discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 23-25 to honor Inez Straub, Berry County Trial Court Administrator after her election as Michigan Court Administration Court Administrator of the Year.
Support, Doster.
Motion by Getty, support by Doster for adoption of Resolution 23-25 to honor Inez Straub, Berry County Trial Court Administrator after her election as Michigan Court Administrator, Court Administrator of the Year. We have a special presentation that I would like to deliver. Do I have it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
This is a resolution to honor Inez Straub, Berry County Trial Court Administrator after her election as Michigan Court Administration Association Court Administrator of the Year. Whereas Inez Straub has served the Trial Court of Berry County for 22 years and has held numerous positions within the court, including court recorder, financial specialist, probate register, deputy court administrator, and her current position as trial court administrator. And whereas Inez Straub has served as trial court administrator and friend of the court since her appointment in 2014. And whereas Inez Straub has served on numerous statewide committees, organizations, including Michigan Court Administrator Association, Friend of the Court Association, the Michigan Association for Family Court Administration, and Juvenile Justice Vision 2020, and has represented the Berry County Trial Court in the most exemplary fashion. And whereas Inez Straub has served on the Michigan Judicial Council as co-chair of the Workforce of Today and Tomorrow Work Group, and whereas Inez Straub has been selected as the Michigan Court Administrator Association Court Administrator of the Year for 2022. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Berry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of Berry County, extends its sincere appreciation to Inez Straub, Inez Straub for her many years of dedicated service to Berry County and the state of Michigan, and congratulations for earning the Michigan Court Administration Association Court Administrator of the Year.
Almost a tongue twister, isn't it?
Congratulations, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I'm really honored and humbled by the nomination of Court Administrator of the Year, and also this resolution. It was a surprise to me, both were actually a surprise to me. I want to thank our judges and court staff and my colleagues for their unwavering support and belief in my contributions to court administration management. This nomination is not just a recognition of my efforts, but a testament to the collaborative spirit of our team, and this is a team that really motivates me to strive to do better and excel in our profession. So thank you for this opportunity and the support and confidence, and again, I really am grateful for our team because without them, none of this would be really possible.
Absolutely, and all your years, going through all those ranks, different positions, everything you've done, that gives you a very unique perspective on our court system, the people involved in that court system, and really qualified you uniquely to lead that team and everything you've done, and that's one thing that we always hear compliments on. We've been able to work through issues and really be a leader in the state for a lot of issues going on there, so that's due to your leadership and the courts and the team you put together, so we appreciate that. Additional comments from commissioners?
Just thank you. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If not, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Again, congratulations and thank you, so.
I move for the approval to reappoint Deborah Jensen and Sarah Nelson to fill Citizen-at-Large positions on the Parks and Recreation Board for three-year terms that begin on January 1st, 2024 and end on December 31st, 2026.
Is there support?
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Getty, support by Campbell for approval to appoint and reappoint Deborah Jensen and Sarah Nelson to fill the Citizen-at-Large position on the Parks and Rec Board for three-year term that begin on January 1st, 2024 and end December 31st, 2026. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of the 2024 agreement between Berry County and Michigan State University for access to MSU extension programming.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Colton for approval of the 2024 agreement between Berry County and Michigan State University for access to MSU extension programming. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Colton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of the November 7th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Is there support?
Do you need that to discuss why we moved it?
We will have discussion on that.
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Smelker for approval of the November 7th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Discussion, it was brought to our attention that either it was stated or recorded in error, and just to, just to correct the minutes, there we go. So.
On page three, if I can take, for just a minute, on page three, Heather Wing ASAP ALF application for the Butler Farm Project, it was noted that the motion reads that moved by Colton, seconded by Doster, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the application, and then goes on, and since that motion, it was determined that it was an application and not the final agreement it could come out of committee. So the proposed motion corrected language would be, if you wanted to read that.
Yeah. The corrected language is motion by Colton, seconded by Doster, to approve the entity application for an agricultural land easement agreement for the Butler Farm Project and authorize the Board Chair to sign the application. So, Mr. Colton, Mr. Doster, are you okay with that revision?
It's acceptable to me.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Doster?
Yes.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. White, for that catch. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators report?
I'm all set, thank you.
Chairpersons report? I am all set. Also, vice chairpersons report. Commissioner Hatfield?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I did attend Johnstown, they are, they're using a new assessor now, and they've also hired a deputy clerk there. And I will be at the Health Department. And I will be at the Health Department this Friday. And I believe it's in Hastings. Yes, Hastings, that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Tunison?
You took care of last week at Rutland, and Mike did last night at Carlton's. I got Hastings tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Smelker?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Getty?
I attended Thornapple Township last night, where they honored one of their firefighters who completed the training in order to receive a Bugle pin. And they continue to do great things with their emergency services and fire department there. And I attended Yankee Springs Township last week. They had a veterans service on Saturday. It surpassed all of their expectations. They've been growing it for a number of years now, and they had about 200 people there. So, very moving.
Thank you. Mr. Colton?
Went, I was at Woodland Village last night to, you know, they were not knowledgeable of the MacArthur Drainage District. And so I was provided by Elizabeth and the Drain Commissioner's office with extra-large color maps of this drain that we saw. And a lot of discussion on that, and almost created more questions than answers. So, gonna try to get Jim Doll out to the next Woodland Village meeting to give them the answers.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Doster?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes. You're right, once again. You're probably not going to thank me here in a minute because at your last Cal meeting, you took action to pass an application that needed to be in by November 13th. Commissioner Getty was the one that brought it up, that it would not be here in time. At the previous Cal meeting, you didn't take action on a request because you were in a committee, and you were not supposed to. So, did you violate the Open Meetings Act or not? One meeting, you can't take action in a Cal, and then one next meeting, you can in a Cal. So, it becomes pretty aggravating not knowing where you stand. So, is it hypocrite? Lack of knowledge of your jobs? Or what? COA attended the information meeting in Nashville. There was three people there, plus Mike Colton. Got in a conversation with a person I used to sit on boards with. His daughter was there. I asked a question about the private financing that was supposed to be coming. Because this COA building went from a 10,000 square foot to a 13,000 square foot to a final 16,500 square foot. It's supposed to be about $7 million, and now it's down to $5.5 million. And you just sit there and say, well, how much financing? How much private financing is available? Well, I can't tell you that at this point in time. But the donations are being covered by the Berry Community Foundation, and they get their quarterly cut. That was interesting to find out. I hear you got to take care of your seniors. Well, as a senior, the best way to take care of me is to go on a diet. The county spending diet. The county tax diet. It's time to start considering how you're affecting seniors. I think you heard, Ron, they might have to sell a five-acre parcel. I don't know if it's because of money or not, but he has two of them. Eighty-year-old senior. I'm just sitting here, wow. It's the COA. One person showed up in Dalton, one person, I think, in Freeport, zero in Millville. City of Hastings is against it. Now they're having information of where it's being used at. So, are you going to say, this is the building you're going to get, and you're going to like it? Or are you going to really address the concerns there also? You don't address concerns of the people. Every time the employees say, or departments say, "I want," they get. The COA is no different. I'm just sitting here, I went to this meeting, and there's, the voters turned it down for a reason. Your board president wants to, I will be done in just a second. Your board president wants to expand services. I think that's the reason it got turned down. Because we can't afford expanded services and more and more. Additional public comment?
Good morning again. Joel Livingston, Rutland Township. The Open Meetings Act is what allows us to speak here. In fact, I had a three-hour discussion with an Eaton County deputy in the basement of their sheriff's office. Really nice one, by the way, it'd be nice if we had one like that. But I was interrogated for three hours by an Eaton County deputy down there over the Open Meetings Act. And Attorney General opinion 5183, I very highly recommend you all read it. I don't just mean that to say that cliche, I mean 5183, check it out. Very eye-opening. It's done by Frank Kelly, who was a Democratic Attorney General, longest-serving in Michigan's history, very respected individual, as well as a fierce advocate for consumer protection, as well as individual liberties. He touches based on a lot of things in there. One of the things that they touch base on is a rule must be adopted and recorded before it's effective. And the reason why I say that is because you as commissioners need to be very careful when stating what rules exist and what rules don't. If you were to say that there was a rule that existed that didn't, and then operate under the color of law as an authority in that matter, then you would be in violation of Public Act 193 of 1976. Another one I've said many times, it's the State Code of Ethics for public officers. A person may not represent his opinion as that of an agency. If you were to make up a rule and then come here and say, okay, well, you must abide by this rule that hasn't been adopted. Well, long story short, Eaton County sees it the way that I see it. You're in violation of that. In fact, the prior board chair for the Board of Health had to lawyer up at the expense of the Eaton County, or the Berry Eaton District Health Department, in order to make sure that he didn't further incriminate himself at that point in time. Colette Scrimger needs to go. There's a document in front of all of you now. She needs to go. Seven Eaton County commissioners signed on to that letter. That's no small feat. The health department needs to be split. We need a health department that serves Berry County, by Berry County. Not someone with a political agenda or ulterior motives in mind. And look at the disparity in services over the past few years. How it is such a lopsided agreement. We pay more for, as Berry County residents. They get all of our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Good morning.
Morning.
A little shorter. Good morning, Rich Tintney, Director, Berry County Community Mental Health. So I thought I'd just take this moment to remind us all. A few days, Thanksgiving is coming up. So we're going to be probably, excuse me, gathering with family and friends. And that's just an opportunity to connect with people. Maybe family or friends that are a little bit distant, or maybe you've seen social media posts. That's a time to check in with them, ask open-ended questions. Just continue to build that relationship to have a safe atmosphere for them where they can, you know, talk, and if need be, lead them to some help. So just want that reminder, and also wanted to publicly congratulate Inez on her outstanding job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Additional public comment?
Sharon Zabrowski, Carlton Township, former COA board member. And I now sit on the COA building committee. I would like to clarify some things that were stated. I think I'm going to start with the reason that the mileage went down when we went for a building. I do not believe, nor did anybody on the board at that time, believe that the community did not want a COA building. They did not want that particular building. I think there is strong support in this community for a building. They wanted a larger building because with a larger building, services could be expanded. There are so many more things that could be offered to seniors if there was space to do it. The current building needs to be condemned, should have been condemned years ago. There is no question that a new building is needed. I listened to the figures. It went from this size to this size to this size. When you're planning, you don't do your final plans. You plan, you replan, you replan until you get what you want. Personally, I don't think the building is big enough. Because I see the services, I see the things that can be done for seniors. That building is going to be too small, hopefully, too soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Additional public comment?
John Lake Irving Township. I'm sure you guys are aware, session ends today at the state. What that means is 90 days from today, anything that wasn't passed as immediate goes into law, including these unconstitutional, unlawful Second Amendment bills that have been signed by the governor. I've been to 16 counties now giving a presentation. I give these bills to Commissioner Smelker, and he looked at them. When I break down these bills to these people, they're dumbfounded to how egregious these bills are. My point here is, if we don't stand for something, we don't stand for anything. I've talked to Sheriff Leaf several times, he's in support of this. I would hope that one of the commissioners that have been there would bring this up and get this on the agenda. Again, by doing nothing, we are complicit. We all understand that a resolution is just that. But why is it that we're pushing this solar panel resolution? What does that do? It does nothing. But it makes a statement. It tells them where we stand as a community. And that's what I'm asking you guys to do. Get this thing on the agenda and vote on it. If it so be it, I've had four commissioners that have told me they are in support of it. That's half of you. The other ones, I don't know where you stand. Please, put this Second Amendment agenda, or sanctuary county, on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Larry Mascolto Township. And I apologize for my statements earlier. Larry leaves the room sometimes. But that was grant money you guys were concerned about. And I'll reiterate what I said earlier. There's 56 counties that weren't worried about losing grant money. Switching gears. The, I urge you to adopt an ordinance on the zoning pertaining to wind farms and solar farms. If you've read the bills, you'll see that that will be quite important to have a resolution in place before the 90 days are up. And from reading the articles in the banner, I'm not too sure that somebody, some people that are around the planning and zoning board consider that a priority. I, myself, I would rather fight than lose than just be complicit and just sit down and do nothing. Now, one of the things also you need to be aware of is a lot of these bills get passed on immediate effect. Immediate effect requires a two-thirds majority vote in both houses. Now, if the breakdown is 56-54 in the House in 2018 in the Senate, do you really think that a two-thirds vote is occurring? One of the elements, and I was just reading the 5120 narrative. And one of the first things that pops in is suspend the rules. Okay? The second thing is, we have a voice note in the House. And he yells loudest, gets the, gets, you know, it passes. There's things going up there. It's unconstitutional what they're doing. It's against Michigan law what they're doing. And I would think that somebody on the commission eventually would contact your representative, your House or Senate representatives, and request that they insist that the Constitution and the Michigan laws follow. There again, I suspect we're going to be complicit and not do nothing in that. I'm expecting a callback from my representative pertaining to that issue. And frankly, I'm still expecting. So, anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your attention. Have a good day.
Thank you, Larry. Additional public comment?
Congratulations again. That's kind of cool, and they bring stuff back here to Berry County statewide stuff. I think it's so cool. Anyways, you said right, it is unconstitutional. And I do expect, I'm going to stand up and say something about it. They're taking power away from constitutional offices, which is your townships and your county, I'm sorry, your townships basically. And they're giving it to a committee over, that the state has made up to put these windmills and solar panels, and I'm not sure what else they're going to do. And, yeah, they can't take away stuff that you guys have inherited over the years and just give it to a committee. That's already been decided years ago. That's, like when you hear me speaking about sheriff stuff. I'm a constitutional office also. And stuff that I've had my inheritance from way back when we were over in Great Britain, all those years, and they brought it on over. We still have that in the common law. So, I'm surprised that there hasn't been a class action sued by the township associations and the county MAC fighting this right here. So, anyways, that's where I stand on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Tunison?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I sit on that health board with Commissioner, with Bruce and Catherine. And I personally, we take an oath of office. I have no problem if Colette Scrimger took an oath of office. So I think that would be one way of putting that to bed, and something we ought to look at. So, that's my personal opinion on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Just like to thank anybody that may have showed out. DKA Schools for the Veterans Assembly. It was a wonderful, fully-packed house. And the VFW Post 422 on Saturday night. I participated in both of those. And it was very touching and very, very important that we attend those.
Vice Chair Hatfield?
Thank you. Just want to make a couple comments regarding COA. First of all, there was, one of their public meetings was in the city of Hastings. It was one of the better-attended of those sessions. And the comments there were universally supportive of the proposed relocation. There were some questions about transportation that were raised, and discussions are ongoing, you know, to make sure that we do have bus access appropriately available. If I heard the comment correctly, it was also stated that the city of Hastings is against it. I'm not sure what the reference was, but the city commission has also been nothing but supportive at this stage. So, I don't know where that came from, but I certainly know that it did not come from the city commission, nor did it come from the people that were in attendance at the public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smelker?
I just want to thank Inez. She is great to work with. I agree with Bob Tunison. I don't see where an oath of office would hurt. And when I was on, I asked for it, and Eaton County was against it. I also would ask the health board, not tell them what to do, but I would ask them before they okay this, to read the complaints that were in there on that survey. That's all I got.
Commissioner Getty?
I have nothing.
Mr. Colton? Commissioner Doster?
I think I'd like to comment on the action that we we took on November 7th regarding the...
the Butler Farm Preservation Project. I supported that. I think that there is a delineation between supporting the application and approving the contract. And we had quite a bit of discussion at that time, and it was our consensus, I believe, that, that we were not actually making a final determination on it by allowing them to go forward with the application, and that that is different than had we approved the contract as a final action. And so therefore, I don't believe that it was a conflict with the Open Meeting Act.
Thank you. Just a couple notes. I agree with what's been said by a couple commissioners. I think there was an opinion from the state attorney general that said the health officer does not, is not required to take an oath of office. But by the same token, you can see the information given to you, and there certainly is no harm in taking an oath, you know, an oath of office to put that stuff to bed. I also attended the COA meeting in Hastings. That was very positive, well-attended, good input, good insight. I liked the plan. I liked the fact that there's potentially a million and a half dollars in savings out there, just for taxpayers in general. I know it was stated that this board continues to grow government and doesn't pay attention to it, but I would call your attention, and Michael can comment on this. But I think almost the last several years, there have been over a million dollars in requests for funding for positions that have been declined. So, we're very strict on some of the things we look at, year over year, at least a million dollars a year in requests for additional employees that are not approved. I know it was mentioned at one point, I believe during the public hearing, that the jail had several items that were on that, and if the budget was read carefully, you would see that those items were requested but not approved. So, there's a lot of things in there, some misinformation that certainly isn't being well thought out or well spoken. So, the other thing is, just to comment, if the solar legislation has been circling around, there's been several meetings, there's been a lot of information. So, I printed this off, just to give everybody a synopsis of this. House Bill 5120 by Rep. Ayesha passed the Senate Wednesday along party lines, received the concurrence of vote in the House later that day. The bill will take effect one year after the governor signs it. The following provisions are included in the final bill. The bill applies to solar facilities greater than 50 megawatts and wind farms greater than 100 megawatts. If a local unit wants the responsibility of approving or denying applications, it must adopt a compatible renewable energy ordinance. Otherwise, the CIO is what it's going to be referred to. Local units of government will have one year from the effective date to create and adopt a CIO. A CIO cannot be more restrictive than what is prescribed in the bill, which is going to be a point of contention I think a lot of us are going to have a problem with. If a local unit does adopt a CIO, a developer must apply to them first that the local unit has 120 days to approve or deny the application. The deadline can be extended up to an additional 120 days if the local unit and applicant agree. If the local fails to act on 120 days, or if the application is denied but meets the requirements of the bill, the Public Service Commission then reviews the application. If the PSC approves the application, the local CIO can be voided if the PFC feels the local's initial denial was unreasonable. If the Public Service Commission approves the application, the applicant will be given, will give the local unit $75,000 to be used as an intervention fund. The applicant will give the local $2,000 per megawatt for public safety infrastructure improvements, but the applicant must agree to the terms of use. So, that's just a highlight of that bill. But what they're basically saying is that go ahead and adopt it and control it locally, but you cannot be more restrictive than what the state ordinance, or, or the state law is going to be. So, we have some questions. We're going to be reviewing some sample ordinances that are in place in other parts of the state, talking to legal about this to see what we can and can't do. Obviously, we have concerns when they say that basically you can control these, but you can't do anything more restrictive than what the state allows. So, there'll be a lot more information coming out on this, I'm sure. I can make copies of this for you if you'd prefer this as well. Says the governor is expected to sign the bill in the coming weeks, especially since Clean Energy Package was also approved this week. Senate Bill 271 by Senator Geis passed along party lines in both chambers to set a renewable energy standard of 50% by 2030 and 100% clean energy by 2040. The sitting reform legislation was introduced to supplement the Clean Energy Package with the goal of making it easier for solar, wind facilities to be built across the state. Shocking, I know. So, anyways, that's where solar is and where it's going, and that's the challenge that we have to address right now. I like the fact that there might be some, some legal or some unconstitutional things we can look at to protect our interest. We will do all that as far as what's in the best interest of the county and our constituents. So, I appreciate your time. If there are no other comments on that, we will adjourn. Thank you, and have a great day, and have a safe day, and good luck to all.